Do we have any citizen input this morning? If anyone in the room cares to make a comment regarding something that isn't on our agenda today, okay, seeing that there is none, we will proceed to our consent agenda.
I'd move approval of the consent agenda.
And I will second that. Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. Okay. The first item on our agenda is from Cody Smith. Oh, I did want to make one comment. If you didn't hear the news, it's an excellent idea to actually get your flu shot if you haven't gotten it. It doesn't always work, but we did lose 80,000 Americans in 2017. This year, the flu seems to be incredibly impactful on young children, and we have had 20,000 people in America have died from this year's flu. So please, wash your hands, use warm water, and get your shot. That's my note. That's my public service announcement.
Okay, thank you. Cody Smith, Road Department. The Road Department had prepared solicitation documents for the paving of Alfalfa Market Road from Palbut Highway to milepost four. The project includes paving the first four miles of Alfalfa Market Road, so this extends about two miles east of Bennett Road and Stencamp Road out in BLM land. The department received four bids for the project. We opened bids on February 14th. Before you this morning is a notice of intent to award the contract to the low bidder, who is Knife River Corporation Northwest, with a total bid of $935,289. Approval of the notice of intent to award letter. We'll start a one-week protest period. If no protests are received in that period, the contract would be awarded administratively. We don't have a schedule yet from this contractor. We anticipate the work will take approximately three weeks, and per the contract, the work must be completed by September 30th of this year.
Couple of questions. Is this about what we figure for this kind of work? Is, I mean, it looks like, so about $250,000 per mile? Is that, this is a four-mile stretch?
For a paving project like this, yeah. So our estimate was just over a million dollars for this project. We were actually kind of surprised with the prices we got here. The price per ton for asphalt mix seems to be going down this year, so the prices we got were lower.
Oil prices are lower?
That's at least the trend that appears to be happening right now. So we were using, for our estimate, we were using bid prices we saw last year that were closer to $69, $70 a ton, and prices we got with this one were closer to $60 a ton, so.
What, so when you stop at milepost four, what is that? Does that section's worse than the following section?
That first four, per our pavement management system, so again, just a quick overview. Every year, go out and rate sample units on all our roads. Enter, when we do that, we're looking at, we're measuring the severity and quantity of different types of distress on those sample units. We enter all that into a pavement management software program we have that then assigns each of those segments of road a PCI, and we, using the decision tree we've set up in that program, prioritize our pavement preservation projects. Yes, this section, the first four-mile section of Alfalfa Market Roads towards the top. The remainder of Alfalfa Market Road is, right now, we're showing it in our five-year plan, is paving that section a couple of years out. That piece will probably be coupled with some minor improvement work that we need to do at some intersections in that segment, so. But yeah, this first four-mile section, certainly the pavement condition is in much worse, is experiencing much worse distress than the next section is.
Thanks.
So you did say it would be done by the end of September?
Yeah, contract completion date is September 30th.
Okay. And it is amazing that all four bids were less than our estimate.
Yeah, like, again, like I said, this, I think this is kind of the first big paving project for central Oregon that's been advertised this year, so we're kind of first in the hopper here. And so, yeah, we were kind of surprised by how low the price of asphalt mix has gone down here this year.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So I'll move approval of Board Chair's signature of document number 2020-083.
And I will second that motion. Any further discussion? Mr. Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you, Cody.
All right, and next item's mine also. I'll just jump right into that. So the Road Department also has prepared solicitation documents for the Slurry Seal Bend Maintenance Zone project. This project includes applying a single layer of Slurry Seal mixture, which Slurry Seal is essentially a mixture of asphalt emulsion, latex polymer, sand, and finer aggregate. The project includes 9.88 miles of local roads located in our Bend Maintenance Zone. These are all primarily residential streets and subdivisions located east of the city of Bend. This will be our first, the first Slurry Seal project that we, the county, has done. Slurry Seals aren't anything new. City of Bend, cities of Redmond, City of Redmond's been doing them now for the last couple few years. I've had experience with them over in western Oregon for several years. It's just another good tool to add to our pavement preservation toolbox. Our intent with these is to kind of help surplant and augment some aspects of our chip seal program, utilizing these Slurry Seals on streets that are a little more difficult to chip seal, especially cul-de-sacs where, with our chip seal, you know, we've got trucks and things, we've got to get turned around in there, and we're not quite as productive in those kind of dead-end streets as we could be with a Slurry Seal, so. So we advertise this for bids. Four bids were received. We opened bids on February 19th. Before you this morning is the notice of intent to award the contract to the low bidder, Pave Northwest, with a total bid of $283,473. Again, approval of the notice of intent to award will start the one-week protest period, and if no protests are received in that period, the contract will be awarded administratively. We anticipate this work will take approximately two weeks. Per our contract, the work can start no sooner than June 8th, and has to be completed by August 31st. So they have a contractor as a three-month window to get about two weeks' worth of work done there.
Great.
Couple of questions. So is Slurry Seal, it's something more of a liquid then versus the chip seal?
Slurry Seal, yeah, so Slurry Seal's, it's, again, it's a mixture of asphalt emulsion, which is basically asphalt oil mixed with water and an emulsifier, so instead of heating it up real hot and letting it cool down, the way it breaks is by the water evaporating out of it. A mixture of that, latex polymers to add some tensile strength to it, and then a mixture of sand and very fine aggregate.
So do you spread it differently?
Yeah, so this is just a single mixture that comes out of the back of a distributor truck with a power box on the back that basically applies it directly to the road, and then this truck has a big squeegee on the back of it, and it'll just drag it along to uniformly distribute it across the surface of the road. And then a crew of guys with hand squeegees behind that comes up to do any cleanup work.
And then I noticed, now, all the companies that bid on this, it must be a specialty industry, because I haven't heard, none of those are names that...
Yeah, yeah, so there's maybe, there's maybe five or six contractors total on the west coast that do this, and they bounce all up and down the west coast doing this work. So the contractor, who was our low bidder here, is actually the only contractor in Oregon that at least we're aware of who does this kind of work. This contractor's home office is located over in Eugene. But yeah, it's fairly specialty work, but these contractors that do it, do it for several different road agencies up and down the west coast. They pretty much just spend all summer with their crews bouncing up and down the I-5 corridor mostly, doing this kind of work.
Is this an experiment for us to see how we like it, or...
I wouldn't call it an experiment. I mean, we've got, you know, other agencies in central Oregon have kind of done the experiment for us. Like I said before, I've had quite a bit of experience with it over in western Oregon. We kind of let the cities of Bend and Redmond experiment with it here in central Oregon with our colder climate and how it's going to perform with studded tires going on it during the winter. Seems to be performing very well, so. So it's certainly a first for Deschutes County, but I wouldn't necessarily call it experiment. It's a pretty tested pavement preservation method, so.
So how long is it supposed to last?
Typically, we're looking to hopefully get at least three to five years of life out of a Slurry Seal, and really, the intent of this is it restores the friction course on the surface of the road, seals at least the micro cracks. The bigger cracks, our crew will come in beforehand and seal with our crack seal machine. But at a minimum, we'd want to see three to five years of life out of this. Generally, with our lower-volume roads, we'll probably see a longer life out of it, though.
Okay, because it's like almost 30,000 a mile, so I just wondered how long that was. And the fact that, you said, didn't, you say at one time it had sand in it or something?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so that just gives it a little more character?
The sand is, basically, it's an aggregate filler in the mixture. What's really providing the friction course for the road itself is the finer aggregate that's in it also.
Okay. Jen, how many people drive around with studs now? Do you have any idea, Cody?
Off the top of my head, no, I don't know a percentage of central Oregon drivers or Oregon drivers in general who are using studded tires.
Okay, I was just wondering, because it seemed like that would be impactful on it.
Yeah, it is, and certainly, you know, this isn't a method we'd run out and put down on one of our arterial, our collector roads right now. It's, we're doing pretty good with those with our chip seal and our other more traditional paving projects. So this is, really, our only intent here is to address the lower-volume, lower-speed local roads.
Okay, thank you.
So I have a request. So I noticed today, this road is really in bad shape in front of us, so is that on their maintenance schedule? The city out there? And then our, I don't know if this is considered parking lot, but right in front of us, but the road right up here...
Yeah, this would be a city street. Off the top of my head, I'm not sure if this is on, if they've got any plans for this project. City of Bend actually has their Slurry Seal project. I think they're opening bids this week, and they also have their overlay projects for the year out.
I was just kind of wondering if we have any, I mean, I know we do work for them. Do we have any ability to ask them to improve the roads around our...
We can certainly make the request as far as us in any way managing or dictating their pavement management program.
We can make a request.
We don't have that role. As far as this right here, I believe this is county property, just part of the parking lot. That'd be something to talk to Lee about.
Both, the sand, the road going up there, and maybe the, I don't know, just...
Yeah, these are all city streets. We can certainly let their Streets Division know that that request came from our, one of our commissioners, or from our commission, rather.
Great, thank you.
All right.
So I'll move approval of Board signature of document 2020-085.
And I'll second that motion. Any further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Mr. Shinkie.
Good morning. Tim Shinkie, Director of the Department of Solid Waste. As pointed out in the solid waste management plan, the transfer station in Redmond is beyond capacity, and they recommended that we improve that as soon as possible, so this is the start of that process. In January, we solicited for engineering services, both design, development of contract documents, and construction oversight services. We received three responses to that request for proposals, and Civil and Environmental Consultants, CEC Incorporated, was determined to be the best proposer. CEC is located, has an office located in Vancouver, Washington. They're a big player in the Midwest, have done just a ton of transfer stations. JR Miller scored very well as well. They're kind of tied in raw scores, although CEC got more first-place votes. So we look at scoring both from a raw scores as well as how individual members of the selection team ranked them. So like in this case, where basically it was a tie as far as raw scores, CEC got more first-place nods than JR Miller. It kind of comes down to a call, a judgment call on my part. I chose CEC, kind of a spread the workaround. CEC also, every subcontractor, the majority of the work will happen with Bend firms. So I made it a point of making sure that everybody else on the project besides themselves was local, and that scored favorably in my mind as well.
Great.
This is a typical notice of intent to award, start a protest period. If there's no protest in the period, then the contract is awarded without further action of the board. You see on my score sheet, they were in the middle as far as cost goes. PBS Environmental, we use them quite a bit. They're a good firm. They do mainly environmental monitoring services for us and geotechnical work. They have a very good price here, but they have not really constructed transfer stations, so they were kind of lacking in the experience side.
So I was going to ask about that. When you rated the cost part of it, and even if it was more broad, it seems like there's such a big difference between them and the JR Miller. I mean, it's over, it's $230, almost $234,000 difference. It's like 30% more, 35 to go to JR Miller. It's almost $90,000 to go to, does, it seems like it's not just as a pricing thing, you only gave them five points better, or 10 points better than, I mean, it seemed like it was more extreme than that for whatever it's worth. I don't, not questioning the decision, but I was surprised that they'd only got a five-point difference for $90,000, because that's a big, and so...
Yeah, I kind of went, you know, in five-point increments. You know, other people, you know, broke it down even more, a more finer scoring. And again, I think, although that's a very attractive price from PBS, they just, they just don't have the experience, and you know, it's quite possible that that fee would grow as we went through the project with an inexperienced engineer, I guess.
The other question I had from the notes and things, so only, the only non-county employee that looked at it was from Republic Services, and I was interesting how high she rated JR Miller over the others, and she was inconsistent. The rest of you all kind of were similar, and you're about, I mean, really close in the way he looked at it. Any thoughts on why that was, or what...
Because she was a woman, probably. Women like to score.
I'm not going there.
I know you're not. Well, we're getting equal pay, though, remember that. There's a new law.
Well, but, but seriously, I don't know that it has anything to do with gender. I was curious, it might, I was thinking it might have difference, had something to do with experience, with who they've hired before, what they're looking for. It seemed like she just had a different scoring sense almost, and I was just curious if you vetted that when you were...
I didn't really...
Yeah, I was just kind of curious why she came up so different.
Well, she was...
I hope it wasn't just based on gender, that there was another reason.
Well, she definitely gave them first place, and she is the only person that did. But I appreciate seeing different evaluations, and especially someone from outside.
So what is the scope of this? So it's engineering the project and then managing it, but it isn't actually doing it, right? That'll be a different contract or multiple contracts, but they're going to be in charge of the project.
They design it. They develop the contract documents for us. We bid, and then they'll help us evaluate those bids, and then as construction proceeds, they're the firm that receives the various submittals that have to come to us to go through that, that professional answering questions about the specifications, you know.
So I'm interested, and perhaps other commissioners will, once you get a design, it'll be interesting to see what is going on, because we get asked about this in public events, like, what are you doing in Negas? And it'd be nice if we can talk, you know, be reasonably informed.
Yeah, I think it would also be a good idea to engage the city of Redmond, you know, when we get to that point, so they know what's, we're planning out there. We'll do that.
So Mr. Shinkie, you actually, your ranking was tied for those two, with the fact that CEC was going to use local, you felt that that was...
Well, that was one of the factors in mind.
I mean, after...
When it gets that close and there's kind of a tie there, then, you know, you kind of have to make a judgment call, you know? And so, so the fact that JR Miller just finished a half-million-dollar job for us on the management plan, my thinking was, let's spread the workaround. That was one factor, you know?
Right.
As well as a number of other factors. So all those locals, that was good. CEC was impressive.
And you say they do the Midwest, so you're already talking like Kansas?
I think they're like, Ohio is their main base, you know, so they have all kinds of transfer stations through that Midwest corridor, you know, and they're trying to get established out here on the west side. And so, I mean, I tied them with Miller and very much, they're both very well-qualified firms, so you kind of drop back to other factors, you know?
Great.
Okay. Well, I'd move approval of Chair's signature of document number 2020-174, Notice of Intent to Award Contract for Negas Recycling Transfer Facility Design and Construction Management Services.
So I want to point out that this is going to, this is going to cross the budget line, you know, so their schedule is not going to have them finished until September with their design work. So we have adequate funds, and this budget will reallocate funds in the next budget to make sure the project gets done. I also want to point out that we intend to construct in the 21, 22 fiscal year, not this coming budget. Well, actually, I am going to have the construction in this coming budget.
Right.
And we are, at this point, moving towards borrowing the dollars, the $6 million, to do that. I'll have, in the budget process, I'll have some scenarios in my spreadsheet that show we borrow for this, how might we look at cashing out further capital needs? So I don't want to say that we're committing to borrowing the full $26 million like I had originally laid out in my spreadsheet. We're intending to borrow for this project, this $6 million project, and then the next big chunk will come, it's with Southwest, in three or four years, and we'll look and see if that makes sense to pay for that one as opposed to borrowing money for that one. I think all those large expenditures in the future will scrutinize that. Should be borrowed, should be, should be used reserves, should be adjusted rates in order to use reserves.
So you already have kind of a price tag, but we haven't designed it?
That's right. That's right. That could change based on the final design that they come to. So when we did the management plan, we had JR Miller give us just a conceptual layout, you know, the size of the building, roads, et cetera, et cetera, mainly to get that budgetary number from them, and that was their estimate. So who knows what the actual cost will be once we get a final design.
Okay, great. Thank you. And we need to vote? Any further discussion?
I made the motion, yeah. Did you second it?
Yes, I did, and then, but Tim's, I seconded it.
Sorry.
In between, yes. So further discussion? Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. Thank you, Greg, for your Treasury and Finance report.
Sometimes the working system doesn't work either, but it may well.
Okay. Good morning, Commissioners. Greg Munn, Acting Treasurer, CFO for the county. And we'll let this warm up. Hopefully, it'll work. And I just have a few slides I want to show you later, and we have a very brief presentation at the end of this that I'd like to share with you as well. Until then, I'm on page 31 of the packet, and I'll walk you through the Treasuries report. If you look down there at the first box, you'll see that our balance at the end of January was $233,869,000. And that amount is about $7 million less than last month. And just to give you some context on that, the average decline in our, the average use of our portfolio balances declines about $6.5 million a month during non-tax collection months. So we're right about where we have seen the averages over the last several years. Still down in that box, if you look at the percentages on the right, you can see that our municipal debt is about 6.6% of the portfolio, our corporate notes are 24%. We're within, I just want to give you a context of all that, we're within our maximum amounts with the exception of the LGIP, which I'll mention in a minute, but in terms of investment returns, typically, our best returns are on corporate notes, and so generally, it's targeting those to try to maximize the capacity within the policy of investments in our corporate notes first. So those are where we get our best returns outside of the LGIP. The LGIP, if you slide down there, it's the second-to-last number in the middle column, $50,683. Our cap on that is $50,400,000. Thank you. I'm running it through here, okay. Which is slightly above the $50,400,000 cap, but we have some leeway there with the state in terms of managing those amounts, so we try to keep that right underneath that cap. If you slide to the box to the right there, Investment Income, you'll notice that our income, investment earnings, $412,000 for the month of January. We then take a small piece off of that, 5% piece, to fund the operations of the Treasury, and we're left with $392,000 that ends up getting dispersed on pro-rata basis across all of the county funds that have dollars invested in the pool. So it's shared amongst the county. And you'll see that that is about $25,000 less than January of last year, that number down below. I don't know why. Okay, I might have to improvise. Do you have one of these? I can try that? Yeah. If you slide down to the box, it says Yield Percentages. Our average return is 2.26%. That's down slightly from 2.3% last month. And again, we've talked about this over and over again, but that's just the trends of the yields and returns that we're receiving on our investment portfolio, and primarily now, we're being hit pretty hard by this coronavirus scare. I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. And our weighted average maturity value, the center box in the middle there at the bottom, is also declining. It was .92 years. It's down to .85 years. So maturities are shortening as the long-term yields and returns are not worth the risk of investing for that long. All right, I'll flip the page, and a couple of graphics there. The top graphic, the 24-month historic investment returns. I added, not to get too busy, but I added a line there, the orange line, and that's, I thought, one of the pieces of information that might be useful, is to see what's happened with the LGIP rates over time. So at the top of that graph, you see the green, that's the corporate bonds. Those, again, are the highest returns typically we see in our portfolio, and the bottom being the red, those are the treasury, return on treasury notes, treasury bonds, and those are typically the lowest, although the least risky. And then in-between is generally the LGIP, and then our overall average county rate, which is in the blue. 10-year portfolio balance, continuing with the same pattern as in the past. 10-year portfolio balance, continuing with the same pattern as in the past. Clicking the page to, page 33. Here's a snapshot at the end of January of all of our investments. And again, as I've mentioned in the past, there's a pretty significant difference between the yield to maturities on, uh, instruments that were bought last January compared to those that were purchased this January. A good example there is the, uh, top two. You see Apple in gray, which was purchased a year ago. These aren't apples to apples, no pun intended, but, uh, apples is a corporate, apple is a corporate, treasuries are, uh, are not. They're the lowest return typically, but you can see about the fourth column from the right-hand side, a difference of about 2.4% and 1.6%. All right? Any questions on that so far?
You're comparing apples to the U.S. Treasury then, the 1.6?
Yes, and that's not really a fair comparison.
No, that is not a fair comparison.
But you could do it to Wells Fargo down below, which is a blue line, and it's 1.9, right?
Yes, that would be, that would be closer.
So Toyota in 19 was 2.7. So what are you highlighting in blue? You're doing, oh, I see, purchases made, yeah, I see what you're saying. Those are comparison ones.
Just to give you some context on what the market is that we're going into.
Yeah.
All right.
I think I've got it coming up.
Okay. Not only the accountant, but you can talk good.
I'm here for your community development department and ITT needs.
I'm so glad he's here.
I think we have it.
Okay, uh, one piece that I'd like to share with you, I'm going to pass these graphs down.
Okay, that's yours.
Okay, ready? Okay, so what you're looking at here is, on the horizontal axis is, is time. Uh, these are the, I guess I should back up and say, these, this are, these are the average U.S. agency, the curve yield on, on U.S., uh, agency funds. So for example, Freddie Mac, Fannie Mae, those sorts of types of investments. The vertical lines represent years. So if you're looking from the left to the right, there are 10 of those, those are 10 years. So the return on a, if you slide out those first 10 vertical lines, that would be the return on those on a 10-year average U.S. agency, all the way out to 30 years, all the way out to the right. So the point I want to make here is that, or let me explain the, the lines real quickly. So the, uh, dash line at the very top, those are the returns that we received on U.S. agencies one month ago. The next line down is the return projection, the returns from one week ago, and then the line below that is now. So you can see what's happened with the returns on U.S. agencies over the last month, and this is highly due to the coronavirus. Especially when you look in the short term, you can see the current rates have dipped really low in the three, four, and five-year, uh, range, and that is where our investment policy lies. We are zero to five years, so we're really feeling this now when it's, uh, time to actually reinvest some of our, our dollars in the market. Just want to share that with you. Uh, the next thing is, you've probably seen a copy of this was put in your box, the Popular Annual Financial Report. So this is the first time we've done this. And the reason for this is to take our CAFR, our Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, which is fairly lengthy and, uh, steeped with all sorts of information about the county's, county's financial information, uh, situation. Uh, but this really applies to a very, very small slice of people that find all of this information important. So what we wanted to do was glean off of the CAFR what we thought was most important to share with the other 99% of people. And so that's what we have here, is our Popular Annual Financial Report. This was the product of work from James Wood in our office, Cam Sparks, and then of course, Whitney put the nice finish on it for us. So we just submitted this to.
She didn't do the numbers?
I don't know.
I know, I saw her credit.
If there, uh, if, if there's a difference in one of them, we could probably say that she did.
Okay.
Yeah. No, so they did a really great job. We've submitted this to GFOA, and we'll let you know how we do on it.
So they've had this available since 1991, according to the note, that they, um, the awards for this type of financial document?
Yes.
So this is the first time we've done it?
First time we've done it.
On this level.
Okay. Yep. So we're excited to see how that rolls out. Uh, business intelligence tools. So we have shared with you the concept of dashboarding, taking our financial numbers and dashboarding those, uh, a couple of times ago. And then, uh, most recently, we shared the ability to drill down into those dashboards. Click on those graphics and actually share, uh, get into more information what's on those, uh, on those graphics. And later, as soon as I'm done here, the last piece I want to show with, or share with you, how these are useful, is how departments are actually using these to change and improve processes. So we'll do a real quick, uh, sharing with you of that.
So I, I didn't know we were moving to a different section. So I just wanted to say, I really liked the Popular Annual Financial Report. I thought it was really nice. Uh, there was, I had some thought on one section, but I, I don't have it in front of me, so I can't remember. But anyway, just in general, I thought it was, it's a great handout. I don't know how many people look at it, but it's, you know, great job, great job by the, I know James, we, when he was in health, he always had colorful, exciting drawings too. So that's, he's a good person to do this stuff. So I, I really liked it, so.
Great. Well, we'll continue to work on that and, and improve it as we move forward. Okay, we'll move on to PERS. So I want to circle back and give you an update on PERS, but before I do that, I want to direct your attention to the graphic up here. So several months ago, I presented what our future PERS costs look like. And you can see there that, uh, this is overall cost, which includes both a projection on our, uh, rates that we, costs that we pay to the state based on the rates and payroll. And then that little thin line, a little thin portion of the bar graph there, which is our debt service. So obviously, we get, um, out to 27, 29, 29, 31, and costs were going to increase quite a bit. Since then, we've had conversations about Senate Bill 1049, which included a variety of reforms that were, uh, put in place to help us address some of these cost increases. And also the, um, potential for the investment into a new site account that's matched by the state's investment, uh, incentive fund. So this is where we started. Oops, there we go.
And remind me again when we must have that funded, that, with the 25% match?
May 8th.
May 8th, okay.
So what you're looking at up on the screen now, this, these are the, these are the rates from PERS that when applied against our payroll resulted in the graphic I just showed you. So this was the swing in, the original swing in, uh, projected payroll rates that we would have to pay. So this is the basis for where we started a few months ago.
But the big caveats being, was certain assumptions about the stock market and return on that, and certain assumptions about how many employees we have. I mean, it's all, you know?
There's a whole actuarial, yep, there's a whole actuarial assumption that goes behind all of this.
Yeah, it comes up to about, you know, between 400 and 500 million dollars of need over 10 years.
So after we looked at that original graphic, I shared with you a potential solution that would allow us to flatten those rates out. And this line here is a representation, this gray line is a representation of smoothing rates and, uh, finding a way to minimize the impact on departments over the long term. So since then, this orange line here is, takes where our original projection was and says, what if, what would be the revised rates with those Senate, Senate Bill 1049 changes? And primarily what this does, and you can see it out in the, out here in the end, is where the rates were originally going to drop off, one of the primary changes to Senate Bill 1049 was to re-amortize the UAL, that big liability, and push it and push it out. So that's why the rates would continue to stay up here versus dropping here under the original. So it pushes that liability out, which means we're paying for it longer than we would have before.
Which does specifically, it's not really that good a deal, but lots of counties and school districts and things needed to extend their mortgage, so to speak.
Yeah, and the issue is really dealing with this up here, with this, this spike. So the blue line here takes the Senate Bill 1049 change, uh, changes, primarily that re-amortization or deferral of the UAL, and then includes the investment of the 13 million dollars into the site account plus the 25% match. So those dollars right there drive this rate down to the blue line. And the concept of smoothing that we discussed a couple of, uh, presentations ago, those, if you take the blue line here, which includes the new site account, and we smooth those rates, which means we charge a little bit more in some years and a little bit less in other years with the purpose of flattening these costs out, flattening the rates out, so that we minimize the year-to-year change to departments, is the black line.
So the only thing this doesn't really account for though is the fact that in the first year, we're putting 13 million more than we need in, so that, seems like the starting point should be higher. I mean, we're, we're prepaying 13 million plus, so really the, the starting dot should be higher if you're really being accurate with it, because it may not be what the state's making us pay, but we've paid upfront, so. I mean, we don't get all that benefit.
That 13 million plus the 25% comes back to us in this blue line, the difference between the orange line and the.
I know, but the dot, the first dot's not right. The first dot ought to be.
No.
13 million more.
It doesn't, it does not include the 13 million dollar investment.
Yeah, but that's my point, is this shows what the state's going to charge us each year for PERS, but it doesn't, but we're kickstarting this, you know, we're, we're putting 13 million and they're putting 4 million or whatever. So really, that first dot should be higher, and then it goes down to this, the blue chart. You see what I'm saying? If you're really being accurate.
And the difference, there's two factors there. One is that the Senate Bill 1049, the UAL deferral is not included in the black line. But it is included in the orange and blue line. So you can see there is a difference between those two.
Yeah, I, I get that. I'm just saying, it looks like by doing this, we're, we're saving money all the way. Well, we're saving part of it because we've put in a big chunk this year, so.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Modify the, the graph to show that.
So the blue wedge here, this is the accumulated savings, projected savings from the 13 million dollar investment plus the 25%. So over the course of 16 years, you can see that that turns into somewhere around 30 million dollars in a return. And then the orange, and this is just in order of magnitude, the orange is the accumulated savings or deferred cost, one of the two, uh, from Senate Bill 1049. So there was a lot going on in this graph. I thought it would be easier to step you through it, to, to give you an explanation. But essentially, this black line, I believe puts us on, gives us a stable plan to move forward with our PERS rates over the next 15 or 20 years. Um, I like the fact that it's basically flat. We have a little bit of a increase here to, to deal with, but after that, it more or less flattens out. In fact, in the next, in the budget proposal, when it gets to you, the net increase as a result of this from this year to next year is probably somewhere in the 1% to 1.5% increase in PERS costs to departments. So a very, a very marginal increase.
So when you say that's a 30 million dollar savings, does that include the 13 million?
It does.
So it's really a 43 plus 4 from the state, so it's really, the gross savings would be 47,000, the net savings is 30, or 47 million, the net savings is 30 million?
So.
See what I'm saying?
So the investment almost doubles itself. So if we have a 30 million dollar accumulated savings over the course of 20 years, if you take away the 16 million, which is the 13 million plus the 25%, we're looking at about a 14 million dollar return.
Wow, so it's only, the net's only 14.
Yeah. And this is amortized over a 16-year period. The reason that is, is because that's where the problem was, is we wanted to solve this hump of a problem and flatten the rates out as much as we could. All right. I hope that, uh, was useful. And if there's no questions about PERS, I'm going to roll on to Budget to Actuals report.
Sure.
Just give you a couple of highlights. So revenue in the general fund, and we could highlight any fund we wanted to, but we just do the general fund because it's the general fund. So our revenue year-to-date is 91% of our budget. And in terms of comparison, last year, we were at 89%. So revenue's a little bit higher compared to budget than last year. On the expense side, we're 56% of our budget has been spent, and that's a little bit ahead of 55%, which was last year. Uh, year-over-year growth, revenue is 7.7% more than last year, and expenses are 7.3%.
The projected revenues are 7% greater?
Right now, they're 7.7% more than revenue were, revenues were same time last year, and expenses are 7.3% more.
Interesting, you're projecting though, the net revenues will actually be, overall for the entire county will actually be less than the 19, fiscal year 19 actuals, by a couple million, primarily because of health, but health benefits. You know what I'm saying?
Can you point me to what you're talking about here?
The last number on the resources overview is 246, 6868. That's our projected revenues this year. Last year, it was 248. If you look at actuals for 219.
All right, let me catch up.
He's on page 37.
All right, gotcha.
I thought that's what we were talking about.
No, it was actually, there was a little, uh, budget to actually in this, page 35.
So the 24, I'm with you now. So the 246.8 is 102% of budget? Is that the number?
Yeah, but I was comparing it to actuals of 2019. I was doing this second column.
Oh, copy that.
I was looking at where, which, you know, like the general fund is up, projected right now to be, uh, a little over 2 million more than we had actuals in 19. Sheriff's Office is more than 2 million dollars, or it's about 2, a little over 2 million dollars more than we had actuals in 19. I was just looking at how do the actuals compare, the projected for this year versus the actuals, not where we are in the collection process because, just looking at what the total actuals were.
Was there a question you want me to get back to you on?
No, I'm just kind of curious that it's, that it's lower because it's, because a lot of things are higher. You know, TRT's up a million and a half, so there's, there's some that are down a lot, particularly health services.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, that's a big drop too, isn't it? So yeah, if you take out other, then all the others are net high.
The Farron Expo is also, um, down from 19 to 20. Actual to projection.
Yeah. I just was, you know, I look at that from kind of the big picture. Where are we getting money and where are we not getting money, and others is hard to.
Why don't I look into a little bit of that and see if I can come up with the key drivers?
Right.
Let you know.
Actually, the other number is.
The other number? Okay.
Yeah, it's quite significant.
Okay.
Even though they say it's going to be 100% if you compare it to actual of 19.
Yeah. Okay. I'll get back to you on that.
The others are kind of self-evident. I mean, there's. I mean, there's more in the general fund, as we've gone through it before, for a couple reasons, so.
Okay. If you want to flip back to page 36 real quickly on Position Control, I'll just make a note that we have a vacancy, an unfilled rate of 5.6%. Last year at this time, it was 5.98%, so slightly, slightly in a, in a lower position than last year.
One thing I didn't realize is that that last column is for the entire fiscal year average. I was thinking it was-
Otherwise, it doesn't calculate.
Oh, I know. I was just trying to do the calculation. It's not where we are this month, it's where we've been through the year on those departments, right? So to see where we are right now, we just have to read the last column, or the next to last column.
5.6, yep.
So it seems like the sheriff is still, it's at 16.75, unfilled positions, and health is at 17.05. So there's still, for our largest departments, there's still, you know, significantly short a few employees.
Well, the one that I noticed that was as major is 911 has seven openings right now out of 53, so that's a 14% vacancy, where these others are more like 3% or 4% vacancy. You know what I'm saying?
Right, no, seven of over 53, so, yeah.
Yeah, that's pretty significant.
That's significant, so.
And Facilities is significant, too, 5 out of 20, it's 25% vacancies. I'll bet that's hard to get those.
Any specific questions on Position Control?
No, I think that's-
Okay. All right, any questions on page 40, basically through the end of the report, on the details?
Just a couple of things to note. Boy, the priors were budgeted at 391, property taxes, prior property, and you're now projecting 950. That's a, that's a reflection of people catching up, I guess, as well as TJ-
Commissioner, what page are you on?
Page 40.
Okay.
Right, that is significant, that prior year's property taxes were double plus of the budget.
And the other ones, the clerk, and the clerk being up, you know, 425,000. It was interesting, because it was about two or three years ago that we were assuming it was going down, and we're discussing it, and-
My budget cycle.
Yeah. My next question's on page 42.
Okay.
Unless you have something before that.
Oh, I just noticed that we actually leased a second office to Jbar J on page 41. That was one of our footnotes. For, it's footnote B.
So does that mean, maybe, I don't know, you know Greg, Tom, does that mean they've, is it just the office, or is another pod, or what, what is that?
Well, yeah, they don't need lease office space. I believe it's the second pod, but I, but the number's awful low. I'm honestly not sure. We'll have to chase down the specifics on that one. They've had a second pod for some time, so this, just based on a mere $8,000 difference, it could be, they did lease a office somewhere in the building, but we'll, we'll find out for sure.
Okay.
So I have a question on the TRT, it's our transient room tax. So the, is it a 1% TRT that goes to the fair that was passed by voters to go to the fair?
70% of that, the most recent 1% increase was dedicated to the fair. But as you know, the Budget Committee has elected to also send that additional 30% the last couple of years, but 70% is what we are obligated to provide to the fair through the ballot title.
What that looks like, if you total those things down below, it's about $1 million or something, if, and those three down in transfers. And then, remind me if the transfer to sheriff and the transfer to COVA are formula-based, because I notice we're, we're kind of building up, our balance has gone from, our closing balance is projected to be 4.4 this year, and it was 2.2 in 19, the closing balance. So it's, or budgeted, or 2.5 was its actual. So it's quite, it's growing, and I was wondering what we're going to do with that.
Well, that is subject to your decision each year during the budget cycle. We've been aware that that unallocated amount has been growing. We have, you have choices on how you choose to spend that or save it. The amounts for the sheriff's office has been, is discretionary each year by the Board of Commissioners with the input of the Budget Committee. The amounts that go to COVA are driven by a contract. There are certain percentages of each increment of TRT that comes in. So we are locked into that until we negotiate a different contract.
Do you know what year we're on in the contract, or?
It's about year four.
Out of five?
It doesn't have an ending date. It renews each year. There is a, some notice periods that are built into the contract if we desire to change the allocation.
Yeah. So that'll be something we'll talk about in budget. I just, I knew we talked about it before, but I just was noticing it, the growth.
Greg, I see that there is a footnote on the COVA actual that's, we've actually given them like almost 1.6 million, and I'm just wondering why that dispersment is at 76%?
C?
Yes.
Minus 27.
Part of that's because we've collected more room tax than we've budgeted. That's primarily it.
Okay.
Year-to-date-
So it was voluntarily giving more?
It's a percentage.
The contract actually doesn't have, doesn't specify a set amount, it's percentages, so as collections come in over budget, then the percentage that goes to COVA would automatically increase as well.
But you're saying they get 27.5% of the room tax actual number? Or is that, there need to be a breakdown to that?
Are you asking for clarification of that?
Right, right, because if you actually calculate it, if you go to actual, and you take the actual, it's, it's a little different.
So their, their projected percentage collections compared to the original budget is about 27.5% more than what they were going to receive.
Okay. All right.
That makes sense, yeah.
All right. Due to greater room tax.
Yes. In fact, year-to-date, we're up 12.5%.
Right.
Room tax.
Okay.
Any other questions on the detail?
My next question is on page 49 on CDD. I was looking at our transfers out, and we did a million 379 last year. Looks like we're doing a million 462 this year. Do you know what the reserve fund is currently?
I don't, do you?
Been doing it for several years.
Nick Lelec, Tishus County Community Development Director, we have several reserve funds, and so the majority of the reserve fund is going into the building reserve fund, but we do have some going into the general reserve fund as well, CDD reserve fund.
Yeah, do you remember what they, whether they accumulate, or what, or what they are individually, or?
I can provide the breakdown. I think overall, it's, we're in the five, I know we're in the 5 to 6 million range for the total reserve funds for CDD, but, and I can ask Sherry Pinner, we can give you the numbers this morning.
And we've gone from more or less zero at the bottom of the recession to five or six, okay.
Exactly.
For all of them.
Correct, for the, for the balance, for all.
And before the recession, weren't they at eight or nine?
Not quite that high. They were maybe a little bit less than that, but they were-
We're almost back to pre-recession, okay.
Great, thank you. I did have a question on page 47, maybe you can let me know. On footnote number H, so the mental health reserve transfer, like, it was budgeted to be this $548,000, and we just won't know till end of the year where that's actually going to be?
I could take a guess at the reason why, but I don't know for sure.
Okay.
I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you.
I think it's a, I think it's a balancing transfer.
Right.
Is that right, Tom? Okay, okay.
Well, what it, yeah, it looks to me like it matches pretty close to last year's, if we do the 548, 601 to last year's actual, so aren't we just deciding, is a decision point or something, whether we need to transfer the money in or not?
So it's my-
From general fund.
There was a budget amount that was established, and at the end of the year, the fund is trued up, and as long as that amount needed to true it up is less than the budgeted amount, the transfer would be made to balance the fund.
Okay.
But I'm going to confirm that and get back to you. That's what I think is going on, yeah.
On page 50, on motor vehicle revenue, I was, I just thought it was fascinating that that is at 58%, and year completed to date is 58.3%. Now, how did that turn out so close?
Wouldn't it be interesting if we had one, one more, if we had the decimal point moved one to the left?
Right, I know. I mean, anyway, noticing, that was, I think, the only one in the packet that actually was like right on, and I'm going, road department, how, how does that?
Even their personnel services is 57%.
I know. Yes, there, but I do have, where are those? Oh, it's on page 53. I was noticing that some of the completed projects for the road department were actually over budget. The Six Corners was like 101,000 over, the budget for C Avenue was 300,000, and it was 369, and then the paving road, Ward Road, was over by like 117,000, I guess. So that just seemed to be a bit, you know, it was, not that we're talking millions, but it's still, they were all a bit over for the completed projects, except for, well, the 500 allocated for, but that's an allocation, for the Ward Safety Project.
So in, and I'll check with the road department on this, but in prior life, we would initially budget these road improvement projects, and it would be, we were in a biennial budget, and it'd be 18 months until we would get started, so the numbers would be out of date. But what we always hunted towards was making sure we stayed within our overall budget, and we realizing that some were going to cost a little bit more, and some would cost a little bit less, managing to that. But I'll check with Chris on that and let you know.
But those are the only three that are completed on this, this actual report, that, and they're all over.
They're up a quarter of a million dollars.
Yes.
Commissioners, if I, just to kind of add to what Greg said, if you look at the prior year numbers for those particular projects, you see they are significantly underspent. So I think part of the, the guesswork on the part of the road is to how much of the project is it going to be done in a certain fiscal year versus how much is it going to get done in the following, you know, on July, July forward, as opposed to June and earlier. So I think that part of it is just a timing issue, and you really have to look at the overall project cost over a couple, three years to see how they truly did in terms of their estimate versus actual.
Well, then, I'd like to know, I can't remember exactly what Six Corners was costing, but if you're saying-
Looks like it cost a million and a half, roughly.
Yeah, I believe that's what it was.
It's the two actuals.
Yeah.
Six Corners, I'm trying to find it. South Canal, oh, I see, okay.
It was a correction from Crook County, from the six-way intersection, from like, what, 1916?
So you'd like to know what those were originally budgeted at versus what they're coming at, okay.
Well, yes, it looks like budget, it was really at eight, it was like at 1.7, if you look at this. So then, if you're saying it's 1.7, it actually came in under budget.
Okay. It's on the list.
It was nice to see that the solid waste was holding firm and at 60% of their franchise, right, right there in the neighborhood, the entire revenue was at 61%. So that always makes me feel good.
Yeah, but it also, Tim hasn't done his estimates yet. He's one of the few that hasn't really projected.
Nobody met his actual numbers.
Oh, I know, I know, but I'm just saying, that could lead to better projections. We used to, before, in 17, we were, the departments are really a lot better than they used to be in terms of projecting than when I started, and so I'm just pointing out, he's one that hasn't projected. Most of them are really projecting a lot these days compared to what we used to do, so that's good.
Okay.
Well, that's part of our monthly process, is to reach out to departments and ask for any changes and-
Wayne started it, and it's, I noticed with the RV park and the fair that they're, they're estimating more revenues this year. I guess it's because our actuals are up, is that what they're, have you got any feedback on that?
On the $60,000 number?
Uh, yeah, well, and specifically the 58 top, but yeah. That's good, I mean, it's just good, I'm, is that your understanding, Tom, that with, because we went to the less than 30-day fees a couple of years ago and-
Well, I know they're, they're going gangbusters, though it's been a mild winter, so I'm sure they're doing better over the winter months as well, but it's rare that you don't see that facility with a lot of RVs in it.
So the winter months, if they're mild, they're better for us?
Yeah.
Otherwise, people go head south.
Further south.
That's good. So I have a couple of questions on risk management and health. On risk management, which is on page 57, what is, there's a big number for claims reimbursement. The actual in 19 was 57,000, now this month, we think it's 450,000. What is, what is, who are we getting reimbursed from?
That was the reimbursement for the Fair and Expo roof, the completion of, of that project.
Oh, insurance is paying those bills?
Yeah, we pay them upfront, and then we get reimbursed from the property insurance company.
And we just hadn't anticipated that last budget season?
Well, we, we thought it was going to come-
The year before?
Yeah.
Do you know how much those roofs ended up being? I remember when we were going to, when it first came up with us in 17, we talked about it, but-
They were, they were about 500,000 or 550.
And then on general liability, I noticed now you, there's a reduction in your estimate of what, about a half million dollar reduction on what you project the claims, general liability claims to be. I noticed the note says it's trending down, but does that factor in any of the suits we currently have, or?
They do, but it's, general liability is very hard- They do, but it's, general liability is very hard to, to project when, when and how much there'll be a payout. If you look over the, the years on general liability, there are years that we pay out a couple hundred thousand, and then, then there are other years that it's in excess of a million dollars. So I tend to, to budget that high, and then as the fiscal year continues, I, yeah, or adjust it accordingly.
Yeah, I mean, even last year, you budgeted 900, and it was only 633.
And the other thing about general liability and workers' comp, those are the largest claims payout, is they, luckily, they kind of flip-flop. One year will be, you know, workers' comp will be anywhere from 500,000 all the way up to, you know, a high of 1.2 million. And then some years, workers' comp is high and general liability is low, then the next year, it flips.
I see.
So you're still leaving the workman's compensation up at the 1.2 production, 1.2 million?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Well, we actually paid out a little over a million in nineteen, so that makes sense.
Then I had a question on health benefits. I'd asked last month about the premiums, and so I would look at it again this month about the CYC premiums. So we had budgeted 1967, and it went, it's projected 16. Well, that's an 18% reduction. So the 5% reduction in whatever it's called, the charge, doesn't explain all that. What's the rest of that I mean, a 5% reduction of rates isn't going to give you a $300,000, or it was 350,000, 347,000 dollar reduction.
Yeah, I understand your question. I don't, I don't have an answer.
Yeah.
But I'll get one.
You see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I see exactly what you're saying.
Just curious if we could get, search on that, if it was just the rates or what?
Well, you would, if you look back at the actials, 1.79 million last year, you know, other than, the only two factors that would affect this would be a rate change, which there was a 5% reduction, but then it's flat this year.
It's still a 10% reduction.
Right, right. So the only other factor is the number of staff.
FTEs or filled positions.
Yeah.
Or the number of.
So I guess that's what I'm kind of asking.
Yeah, yep.
Are we serving less people over there, or did they do something else besides the 5% reduction?
I know they've been hiring a lot of people lately.
Yeah, yeah. I'll get an, I'll get an answer for you on that one. Any other question on the financials?
Nope.
Not for me. Okay.
You have any?
Just, so just two more things I want to bring up real quick, is we have our investment advisory committee meeting next week. It's on Tuesday. And I'm, I just want to, you know, I'm really pleased with the members on our committee. They're engaged, they're smart, they understand the investment community. So I think they're, they're a big help to the work that we're doing to efficiently and ma, in a way to maximize our return in our portfolio. So that's next week, and I'll give you a briefing on that afterwards.
Do you meet with them quarterly, Greg?
Semi-annually. And then also on Tuesday is our department budget kickoff. So that'll be, we started the year with our internal service funds, developing their budgets, and then we rolled that into budgeting efforts with all of our departments. So that'll be on Tuesday as well.
It sounds like a party, doesn't it?
It does.
A kickoff.
Yeah, kickoff.
Yes.
And then I want to introduce Ariel Samuel here in a second, but I want to go back and touch on business intelligence, the dashboarding, the drill down that we talked about. There's really, there's about four reasons why this is important, and I'm going to show you one today that we haven't shown you before. But one of those reasons is, as we've talked about before, is just simply monitoring. Is there, is there a way to take all of this information and boil it down into a few graphics that work for most people in terms of monitoring budgets, monitoring, you know, a lot of the questions that you're answering or asking? Another one is transparency. How do we make this information more digestible to folks who aren't inside the county? And then also in your seats, in terms of decision-making, how can we make this information more useful for you in terms of making decisions for the county? And then the other one, which we haven't talked about yet, which we're going to talk about today, is process improvement. How do we take data on fiscal data and our operating data and look at that and say, you know, we'd like to make some changes, we'd like to shorten a process, we'd like to make it less expensive. How do we monitor that and use this data to make some process changes to actually improve the things that we do every day in our, in our departments? So with that, the star of the show, I'm going to turn this over. Unless there's any other questions for me?
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Ariel Samuel. I'm from Health Services. I'm the supervisor for billing prudentially in fiscal services and contract services. So as our administrative services division has made some structural changes recently to the supervision of a few of our teams to better balance workloads, we also needed to figure out how to manage the increasing and evolving financial needs of our departments, of our department, including a perceived lack of fiscal team staffing. We wanted to do that by using existing tools and technology. It's worth noting that in fiscal year 2010, we had the budgeted, adopted budget staffing for Health Services was 130.6 FTE. For 2019, it's 255.15 FTE, so that's a 95% increase. During that time, fiscal staffing has remained the same at 2.0 FTE. So some of the opportunities that I identified, I just very recently was asked to supervise the fiscal services team. So some areas that I identified or were identified to me as having some room for growth and change. We were processing our accounts payable or AP invoices in mid-December that were dated early to mid-October. Obviously, that's problematic in eight-week or more lag for a number of reasons. As a supervisor of a new-to-me area, I had no benchmark data or resources to tell me who on my team was doing what and how that output compared to other departments in the county. So I really needed to establish a baseline in order to even begin to consider where we truly understaffed, or was there something we needed to change in our processes to make things more efficient? There was no identifiable way to split up the workload, because all of the AP invoices were kind of going into this bucket, which you'll see, because everyone was working in that bucket at once, things were getting double-worked, just too many cooks in the kitchen. The bucket of AP invoices made it really difficult to implement any kind of prioritization or assignment of work. Just again, it was one big catch-all. The big, the big thing that needed a lot of attention was our process for reconciling and receipting our daily cash. It was very lengthy, very time-consuming and confusing due to some recent, in the last few years, changes we've made in health services in terms of collecting co-pays. I've also moved the billing team over to receiving electronic fund transfer checks from insurance companies rather than paper checks, so it makes things much quicker. But our daily cash receipting didn't keep up with that. So we were literally spending a dollar to try and track down and report on a dime. And then finally, I call it squirrel syndrome. I don't know if anybody's seen the movie Up, but the dog's like squirrel and runs off in the other direction. There was a lot of that happening on the fiscal team because they didn't have any metrics or benchmarks. It was like, oh, this email came up, I'm going to do that. The phone call came up, I'm going to do that. And the daily tasks kept getting pushed further and further down. So some of the solutions we came up with, I worked really closely with Cam Sparks and James Wood. I also worked really closely with our Health Services Data Analytics team. We were able to combine some reporting and data from Munis and Outlook, actually, and translate it into some PowerBI dashboards that allowed me to monitor my employees' productivity, compare it to others in the organization, and start setting some goals and benchmarks. The daily cash receipting automation took data from Epic, our electronic health system, and Munis, and then combined and translated it into their respective languages, which allowed us to virtually eliminate a human interpretation and manual input of this data. So the first dashboard that was created was our accounts payable dashboard. The various funds and the AP clerks are over here on the left. The date span, and this, you can change this, is up here at the top. The upper right box shows the clerk and the average number of accounts payable invoices they are doing per day. And then the information in the middle is just allowing you to see, you can pick what clerks you want to look at, how many invoices they're doing, and then overall for that fund, who's entering what and how many we've entered and processed in that timeframe. So that was really helpful for me because it allowed me to monitor in real-time what my staff were doing. It's allowed me to start setting some benchmarks for them. And then when they weren't meeting those daily productivity goals, I could immediately intervene and say, what are the barriers here? The second dashboard that was created helped with how to prioritize and restructure our AP folder. So originally, I talked to you about the big bucket. So over on the left, they were all just going into inbox. That's about it. So with James's help, we created some new folders and ways of categorizing the different accounts payable invoices that come in. We have WIP, which are work-in-progress folders. So when things need to be worked there and there, and then they get moved over to processed. So by creating this new inbox structure, we were, I say we, really was Cam and James's baby, were able to create this dashboard that allows me to quickly go in and see what's in the inboxes, what, how many things need to be worked, what's the oldest date of the accounts payable invoice that's in there. It also allowed me to be able to see, it allowed me to be able to assign different WIP, work-in-progress boxes, to different employees, rather than just get in the big catch-all and try and do some work. So along with that dashboard, this dash, this dashboard is part of that. So restructuring those inboxes allowed us to drill down even further to see what's been read, what's been not read, how long it's taking invoices to get processed, once they get moved into the work-in-progress folders. Down here in the lower left, I can quickly see of the different types of AP invoices we have, what's the highest volume, vendors is quite, quite large. So there again, I'm able to take some data and assign work and redistribute priorities based on that. This is all information we didn't have before. So the daily cash receipting automation, this screenshot really doesn't do justice to the tremendous amount of process improvement and data intelligence that's built into this workbook. This new workbook combined three separate reports that we were using before, automated all of the project string coding, and allowed us to do one click, one quick journal upload to Munis. Previously, pretty much everything that you see on this screen was being manually researched and keyed in by one or two individuals. And if you'll remember, I only have two FTE. Sometimes taking as long as six hours a day to research and code all of this. Daily cash receipting because of this improvement and automation went from four to six hours a day on average to 15 minutes. So these are just some simple graphics to visually show you what these tools and resources have meant to our department. Our AP turnaround time improved by 300%, going from eight or more weeks down to two. Again, like I said, the hours spent on daily cash have decreased by 94% from four hours a day, that's a very low average, to 15 minutes or less. So by spending less time receipting our daily cash, we freed up resources to tackle other things in the department. So I just want to say, I've worked for the county for seven and a half years, and I've seen a really dramatic shift in the last several years towards efficiency and innovation. So I always ask my staff, my staff, if you've worked here and you've been pressing a button the whole time you've worked here, instead of just pressing the button, ask yourself, why are you pressing it? Does it still need to be pressed? Is there a better way to press it? Can we combine buttons? It's really shifted the way we look at our work. And I tell them, don't worry about whether the outcome is possible, just tell me what the outcome is that you want, and I'll see if I can make it happen. So this was, this was this. I went to James and Cam and said, this is what I need, this is what I want, how can you help me? Can you help me? So I'm very grateful to Health Services and specifically our finance department for helping us implement all of this. It's obviously made a tremendous difference in our work. Any questions?
Fascinating. So Ariel, you, what, we have 120 more employees than, than 2010, is that what?
Yes, but the same amount of fiscal staff.
Right.
Yes.
Two.
Yes, two.
Two, yes.
Two.
So those two people now are doing a very well-organized operation.
We're, we're working on it, yes. I took over supervision December 1st, and they've been really on board with my style of supervision of, let's see if we still need to press the button. So yes, we are definitely moving in a much more efficient, streamlined way of life.
Great.
Yeah. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your presentation.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cynthia Smith with the County Planning Division. Before you, is a consideration of second reading of a ordinance 2020-002 for a Redmond Urban Growth Boundary Land Exchange with the county. We are, we are looking at approving a comprehensive plan amendment and a zone change with this. The first reading was conducted on the 12th, February 12th. And so we're here for the second reading. I just want to point out, I made two minor changes to the ordinance. It's basically in the header for Exhibit B and Exhibit C. It was more aesthetics. I noticed that the exhibit was not showing up on every page as intended, so I just filled it in, just so we all look good adopting this ordinance. Otherwise, nothing else has changed, and legal has reviewed this ordinance. Adam Smith, legal counsel, has reviewed this ordinance in the past.
Okay.
So that's.
Great.
So I would, I would move approval, do I need to move approval of this?
The first motion would be to move second reading by title only, and then after that's completed, you would move adoption.
Well, I'll move for second reading of ordinance number 2020-002, Redmond UGB Amendment.
And?
By title only.
And I will second that motion, Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. So by title only, I will read that in ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title 23, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Adjust the Redmond Urban Growth Boundary and Comprehensive Plan Designations for Certain Properties, and Title 19, the Deschutes County Zoning Map to Adjust Zoning for Certain Properties, ordinance number 2020-002. So now we need to adopt it?
Yeah, the motion now would be to adopt ordinance 2020-002.
So I'd move approval of ordinance, or adoption of ordinance 2020-002.
And I'll second that motion, Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
And the chair votes yes.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you, and this will become effective on May 26th, in 90 days.
May 26th, 90 days. Thank you.
Thank you.
We've been working on this for three years, three and a half years, as long as I've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah. Good, thanks.
Thank you so much. All right, so Matthew?
Good morning, Commissioners. Matthew Martin, Deschutes County Planning Division. As noted on the agenda, and very similar to what Cynthia just presented to you, this is a consideration of second reading and adoption of ordinance 2020-003. This is a comprehensive plan amendment with goal exception to allow sewer outside of an urban growth boundary on rural lands to serve exclusively the City of Bend Outback Water Facility. First reading of the ordinance was conducted by the board on February 12th, approved unanimously, so back for a second reading and, and adoption consideration.
Okay.
And I'll note, no changes to the ordinance that was presented to you on first reading, and it has been reviewed by legal counsel.
Thank you.
So I would move second reading of ordinance number 2020-003.
So I would move second reading of ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero three, City of Bend Plan Amendment for Sewer to Outback Facility by title only.
And I will second that motion, Commissioner Henderson?
Vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. Thank you. So, an ordinance amending Deschutes County Code Title twenty-three, the Deschutes County Comprehensive Plan to Add an Exception to Statewide Planning Goal eleven Public Facilities and Services to Allow Sewer on Rural Lands to Serve the City of Bend Outback Water Facility, ordinance number twenty twenty dash zero zero three.
And then I would move adoption of ordinance twenty twenty dash zero zero three, City of Bend Plan Amendment for Sewer to Outback Facility.
And I would second that motion? Any further, Commissioner Henderson?
I vote yes.
And the chair votes yes. So, thank you so much.
Thank you, and just a note of effective date is ninety days from today, which is twenty-sixth.
Doesn't, doesn't it have to go to the state for...
So next steps is staff will coordinate a submittal to Department of Land Conservation and Development for their, you know, consideration and acceptance of the, the change to the plan amendment, or change to the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. I, I believe we're going to recess, is there any further business we should do this morning before we do?
Found it, in my pocket.
What?
I found this, I've been missing it, it was in my pocket.
Oh, good. Well, that's, how exciting is that?
Well, it's exciting for me because...
No, I found my, I left this here, I couldn't figure out what happened, what happened to my fifteen-dollar calculator, so...
Yeah, I know, if I hadn't worn this jacket...
Well, it's up to the board. As you know, we have two and additional executive sessions that we didn't have time to do on Monday, so we could either retire upstairs and do those now, we could, you could take a break for lunch and reconvene after lunch, whatever your pleasure is. We've also, I've got just a, a couple of quick other items as well.
Okay.
So I've actually got a, I'm on the Public Health Advisory Committee and they meet at noon, so I'd rather, I think, recess for now and then get over to that meeting.
Um, yes.
So come back...
We were going to recess until two, so he can get back from that meeting.
Okay.
So thank you very much, we will therefore recess till two.
And I'll be upstairs?
Upstairs, yes.